Walk with us, and help us. Let us hold you, the first responders, and keep our heads still about it. Thank you for all that you do in our lives, most of all, to find salvation.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated.
Seconded at?
Here.
Charles Baer?
Here.
Wayne Baer?
Here.
Johnny Bruce?
Here.
Michael Lucas?
Here.
Wayne Gibson?
Here.
Beverly Hall?
Here.
Tyler P.
Here.
Wayne Kidd?
Here.
Scotty Kidd?
Here.
Zachary Marlowe?
Here.
Suzanne?
Here.
Justin Orick?
Here.
Derek Sharp?
Here.
Scotty Kidd?
Here.
And it's 14 here, one absent.
I'd like to state that Dwayne Kidd will be here shortly. He's running a little late, but everyone, please go ahead and check in.
That's not confirmed.
Okay, there we go. No, I'd like to state that we have 14 present, one absent. We do have a quorum. Uh, suspend the rules, sir. What's the suspension for?
For issue of an exemption.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Uh, we can suspend, we'll get those. All right, well, you're voting on suspension. Vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes, one absent. Rules have been suspended. Dwayne, you have the floor.
Uh, we had a suggestion in sanitation committee. Our motion is to lower this referred as sanitation director. This position may be based off of the position that the director.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. Dwayne Gibson. Okay, you're voting on the, was the recommendation, what was the number, count, come out a recommendation? Was the vote?
Um, five.
Five, zero. Thank you. Uh, vote, please.
I'm turned.
Okay.
It's not like the others.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. I have 11 yes, uh, one no, and one abstain.
Two abstain.
Two abstain? I'm sorry. Okay, two abstain. Okay, it has passed commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Orick.
Uh, I guess it's probably the best time to bring this up at this point in the meeting. It's a few months ago, you may recall, and I'll probably, when our re-uns were suspending the rules, so I don't think we have to do that anymore. Uh, I brought up a couple of months ago, I guess it was in September, about trying to form a three-member committee, and I've been running around with that in our heads and talking with the state, and we've still got that, and we've got a mimic for it, but one thing that I, that I want to bring up tonight, and I want to offer it to the mayor, I'd like, if it's possible, if the mayor will take this place back as overseer of sanitation. If he would, I've got a motion I'm gonna make. If not, I'm moving to the next one. Would you consider taking?
I would take oversight.
Okay.
I can't have my boots on the ground.
I understand, and I think that's the way it's supposed to be anyway.
What's your motion?
My motion is amend resolution number 2022-11-21, which empowers the authority back to the mayor. Uh, I don't, did you print everybody a copy of that?
Seconded by Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Kidd.
2022-11-21, and that's the...
[inaudible]
-five, okay. You pick that place?
Motion to amend resolution number 2022-11-21-5, which gives the entitlement back to the mayor as the oversight for the sanitation and takes away from the county commission.
Motion by, seconded by Kidd. Zach, did you have a question?
Should it be amended resolution or this resolution?
We can't hear him over here, Mr. Chairman.
Wait just a second. He's talking to this guy.
Should it be amended resolution or this resolution?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, if I can direct it to Joe, Joe has had dissent to him last week, and we've been actually dealing with this since September. You, the email I got from Joe was approved by Joe. Have you got a copy, Joe, that you want? Does it need, my understanding, it's gotta be amended because we're re-amending the resolution that actually took it away.
Okay. Is that good? Okay. Uh, we'll be voting on the mayor taking sanitation over again. Is that correct, Ms. Orick?
Yes, sir.
Is that your second, Mr. Kidd?
That's right, Mr. Chairman.
Vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. Mayor, you are now over sanitation.
Well, thank you. If I, uh, I do need boots on the ground, so I need to make a recommendation and, uh, on a dinner basis until we take applications for, uh, staying here on the meeting.
Yeah.
So, if you want to be interim director for this one.
I'd like to, yeah, I mean, that's...
I nominate David to be interim director.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion by Kidd. Joe?
Chairman, he would need to resign. He can't do that.
Committee.
Committee. Committee.
Okay. Do we need to put that beforehand, or?
I withdraw my motion until we figure this thing out.
Okay, got you. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
So, he would need to step down as the chairman of sanitation as a member. Okay, do I have that in for me, motion?
Is that fine, Mr. Atkins?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, David has two yes.
Yeah, I can, I can make that motion to step down as the chairman and as a committee member. Additionally, I'd like for the first district to be represented. If it's okay, we'll get Mr. Gibson to fill my shoes temporarily until, at which time I come out of that position.
Is that a, the motion was covered?
I think it probably is.
Okay. Got you. I agree.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. I got it. Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Kidd, seconded by Nance, that David Atkins stepped down at this point as a member of sanitation, and that Dwayne Gibson would represent the first district until we find out exactly what we're gonna do. Is that, is that okay?
That is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
I would, Mr. Chairman, I would say.
You would say, okay, very good. Is everybody good?
Yes, sir.
And Sue, you good with that?
I'm good.
Ready to go, Tom? Let's vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 13 yes, one abstain. Okay, so it has passed. Now, we can do what the mayor needs to do. Is that correct, Joe?
I hereby agree with that motion, that the commission is voted on and passed as a commission and resign as the member of that committee and chair of the committee.
Do we have that for the record? Now.
I hereby make a nomination of David Atkins to be...
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Correct.
Interim director.
So moved.
Okay. David, are you good with that?
I am good with that. I would like to state that I have a few obligations additionally, as because I am self-employed, but, um, notwithstanding those obligations, I can do the job.
Okay. Mr. Kidd, is that your motion?
That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Marlowe, is that your second? Okay, you're voting on the mayor's recommendation of David Atkins filling in as the director of sanitation, interim director. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 13 yes, one abstain. Okay, that motion has passed. Uh, anything else? You made the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Chairman, did we clarify as an effective date of the motion, effective date of the statement to accept? Well, I'll actually get the discussion.
It's his responsibility.
Right there.
Okay, he says name.
Mr. Chairman, while we have the suspension of the rules, do you want to come back later? Because I've got some things I need, more things I need to bring up under suspension, if that's correct, or we can wait till later. I'm fine with it.
Let's just wait till later.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Can I just ask for a little clarification?
Yes.
And I heard the mayor say right now, does that mean tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. We need some boots on the ground. Okay. David, I would suggest you stop by finance before you go out. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, motion to unsuspend the rules at this point.
I have a motion by Orick, seconded by Marlowe, to unsuspend the rules. Vote, please. This is for unsuspending the rules. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. The rules are unsuspended. Now, we can get back to the agenda, unless anyone else has got anything they want to do before we go. All right, moving on down.
He wouldn't let me.
Approval of the previous minute meetings, need a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Gibson. Motion by Kidd. Vote, please. David, give it one more shot. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. Approval improvements has passed commission. No republic applications, approval and revision.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Orick, seconded by Marlowe. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. No republic applications, approval and revisions have passed commission. Committee reports amendments, budget and finance, legislative affairs, building grounds, airport, sanitation.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, don't worry, you have the addition of the infrastructure, which has been later.
It'll be later under suspension.
Okay. Motion by Kidd, so I have a second. Seconded by Marlowe. Vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. Committee reports amendments have passed commission. Approval of budget amendments and other funding resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Budget amendments 11-1 through 11-7, 11-9 through 11-12, holding out 11-8. Do I have a motion for those?
Seconded, I'll...
Motion, Kidd?
Yes, sir. Make a motion.
Second.
Seconded by Gibson. You'll be voting on 11-1 through 11-7, then you'll vote on 11-9 through 11-12, holding out 11-8. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. Budget amendments 11-1 through 11-7, 11-9 through 11-12 have passed commi, have passed commission. Moving on down. Mr. Marlowe, I have a budget amendment 11-8 that passed through your committee. Do you wish to make that motion?
As chairman of the infrastructure committee, I make a motion to approve budget resolution 11 dash, uh, budget amendment 11-8.
Mr. Orick, since you are insurance and personnel, it passed, did it pass your committee?
It did, it passed unanimously.
Do you wish to make that second?
I'll make the second on 11-8.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, since the audience here and the media's here, I'm requesting that you read that, that one into the records, please.
Budget amendment 11...
That is right, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Man, you have it.
You want the breakdown of it too, Chairman?
No, I got it right here. No, it, it tells against the total number.
Yes, it's what you got there. I think that's what the people need to know.
Okay. Isn't that resolution number 11-8? You want me to vote on it first, Scotty, and then?
Yeah, that'll be fine, Mr. Chairman. I'm okay with that.
Just go on 11-8, and then I can...
Respectfully, that's fine. Thank you.
You're voting on 11-8. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Beverly, thank you. Tyler, thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to remind you.
You might want to explain why we're abstaining.
Beverly and Tyler are county employees, therefore they have to abstain. They cannot vote for it. Uh, I would like to state that it has passed, 12 with two extensions, so budget resolution 11-8 has passed commission. Mr. Kidd is asked that I read it into the record. Resolution number 11-8, resolution authorizing budget amendments 128 and other special revenue funds to the fiscal year 2022-2023, whereas proposals use of the second round of ARFA funds were approved by the infrastructure committee at their November 1st meeting, with a bonus paid further approved by the insurance and personnel committee at the November 7th meeting, and, whereas, the qualifying criteria for bonus pay for all non-school funds was recommended by Mayor Lynch, and stipulates eligibility employees must have been employed at any time from March 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2022, and must still be employed as of November the 27th, 2022, with full-time or part-time status determined by employment status as of November 27th, 2022, with gross bonus pay estimated at $2,000 for full-time employees and $1,000 for part-time employees, for a total estimated cost, excuse me, of $499,179, 179 dollars, inclusive of benefits, and, whereas, the jail courthouse improvements are estimated at $750,000 and consist of door controls for the jail cameras in the jail and courthouse and other capital outlay needs. Whereas, sanitation department equipment allocated total $785,241.30 and consists of an excavator, trailers, high lift, and other capital outlay needs, with $414,195.25 having been approved for an excavator and trailers in September. And whereas, the Jacksboro Elementary expansion of the gymnasium and cafeteria dining area was allocated at $350,000 for building improvements, and, whereas, the Valley View area box culvert drainage project was allocated at $250,000, and, whereas, the East Tillsay Development District reporting and administration fees of $35,000 were provided for, and whereas, supplemental water projects funding was allocated at $1,200,000, and whereas, the above identified allocation represents the county's total second round funding in the amount of $3,869,420.50. And now, therefore, be resolved by the Campbell County Commissioners of Campbell County in the Red Recession on the 21st day of November of 2022. Is that good, Mr. Kidd?
Yeah, I do want to make a note, too, that this is, I think Commissioner Orick had made this suggestion, and for these funds to be available for the employees around the December the 2nd, I'm sure. Is that right?
That is correct, sir. Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Okay, approval for payment of the monthly travel credit card use. Mayor? You ain't used it again, have you?
No, I'm gonna break that one.
All right, approval of the credit card. Guys, vote.
Got a motion, a second.
I better get a motion, have it.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Kidd.
Second.
Seconded by Gibson. Sorry about that. Now, does anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. Moving on. Reports from county officials and all departments, including Board of Education.
Motion.
Motion by Orick, seconded by Marlowe. Vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. Reports from county officials and all departments, including Board of Education, have passed commission. Moving on. Reports from organizations receiving funding from the county.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Kidd.
Second.
Seconded by Charles Baer. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. Those reports from organizations receiving funding from the county have passed commission. Okay, moving on down. Other matters. Ms. Sue, I have one for you. I'll read out later, okay? Scotty, I have one for you, and I'll read it later.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor, you have the floor. I'm sorry, you hadn't, you took care of everything that you had. I think Scotty was carrying yours, wasn't he?
That's right. Thank you.
Okay. I think that moves us down to the commission.
Yes, sir.
There's other stuff and other matters, it's just beyond the commission's hands.
Yeah, beyond yours, yes. You have, Chairman, I think you have suspended the rules.
Yes, sir. When it gets to...
All right. Hi, Scotty Kidd. County Commissioner of the Second District hereby submit the following motion for consideration at the county commission meeting on November the 21st, 2022. Motion to approve of the home grant policies and procedure. Okay?
That is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. Joe's had time to look over that, I'm sure.
I had looked over it, and I had said to Amanda that it appeared to be as properly performed. Please have a line on it. Record, ladies and gentlemen.
It also got my confirmation, too, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Okay, vote, please. Zach? Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. Hi, Scotty Kidd. County Commissioner of the Second District hereby submit the following motion for consideration at the county commission meeting on November the 21st, 2022. Motion to approval of resolution 2022-11-21 for adoption of the home grant policies and procedure.
That is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconding his motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Orick. Zach? Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. That takes care of Mr. Kidd. Hi, Zachary Marlowe, County Commissioner of the First District hereby submit the following motion for consideration at the county commission meeting on November the 21st, 2022. Motion, approval of the 2023 legislative agenda as recommended by the Legislative Affairs Committee. Is that your motion? Do I have a second?
You have a second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by, go, Baer. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. That also passes commission. Hi, Zachary Marlowe, County Commissioner of the First District hereby submit the following motion for consideration at the county commission meeting on November the 21st, 2022. Motion, prison board resolution 2022-11-21-1.
I need it read as follows, because we need, for the minutes, because we're sending it in to read. Resolution number 2022-11-21-1, resolution requesting additional prisoner board revenue from the State of Tennessee.
I'll second his motion.
Okay. Hold you a second. A second. And it's just the end of the session.
Mr. Chairman, can you explain to us what we're voting on?
It's, it's a prison board resolution.
Okay.
Do you have it now? Ready? Okay, vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes.
That has passed. Zach, make sure you give Amanda, make sure that that...
I have all four of them.
Yes, ma'am.
You seconded that, you won.
Rested. Okay. Go ahead, Amanda.
Thank you. Um, the header, so you have each of those resolutions, so he just wants the full motion to be the full header of the resolution. So you got all of those written down, and they're all on the actual resolutions that are in there. So they're not on that paper. That one, they're on the preview board.
Is that good, Mr. Marlowe? Okay, moving on down. Hi, Zachary Marlowe, County Commissioner of the First District hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the county commission meeting on November the 21st, 2022. Motion, Veterans Affairs Resolution 2022-11-21-2.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that your motion?
It should be read as follows. Resolution number 2022-11-21-2, resolution requesting funds from the State of Tennessee to aid in operating the Veterans Affairs Office.
That's your, okay, that's your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Voting on Veterans Affairs Resolution. Anyone wish to change their vote?
I think the mics might be tore up, I believe.
I just didn't get my...
Can you folks hear me back there? Hey, guys.
Tyler? Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. Veterans Affairs has passed. Um, Amanda, I would ask you, next time, say that. That's, that's, that's okay. That's fine. That's okay. Hi, Zachary Marlowe, County Commissioner of the First District hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the county commission meeting on November the 21st, 2022. Motion, hotel motel tax resolution 2022-11-21-3, should read out.
Okay, um, resolution number 2022-11-21-3, resolution requesting the Tennessee Department of Revenue to collect all hotels slash motel tax.
Second.
Okay. And that's your motion?
Yes.
Seconded by Gibson. Vote, please. Zach?
I'm sorry, I was trying to get to the next.
Uh, anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. 14 yes. That also has passed. I'd like to state that Dwayne Kidd is here. Okay, now...
That's the mailman.
How'd they say we get him off? He needed a favor to vote.
Now, press yes, Dwayne.
Mm-hmm. There we go. Thank you. All right, let's go back. Okay. Hi, Zachary Marlowe, County Commissioner of the First District hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the county commission... motions for consideration at the County Commission meeting on November the twenty-first, 2022. Motion, Ground Ambulance Resolution twenty-two dash eleven dash twenty-one dash four. Should read?
Resolution number twenty-two dash eleven dash twenty-one dash four, resolution requesting extension of ground ambulance service provider assessment.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second right here. Motion by Marlowe, seconded by Oreg. Go, try it again. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Fourteen yes. Fifteen, I'm sorry. All right, Dwayne, I had to do the same fourteen, sorry about that. Okay. Hi, Zachary Marlowe, County Commissioner of the First District, hereby submit the following motion for consideration at the County Commission meeting on November the third, twenty-twenty-two. Motion to close list of projects under consideration for utilizing ARPA funds as recommended by the Infrastructure Committee. Is that your motion?
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. You got it?
I got it, yeah. All right, vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Fifteen yes. Motion passed. Moving on down. Hi, Zachary Marlowe, County Commissioner of the First District, hereby submit the following motion for consideration at the County Commission meeting on November the twenty-first, 2022. Motion to allocate round two of the ARPA funds as recommended by the Infrastructure Committee.
Yes, and this includes everything that's covered in budget amendment eleven.
Second. Okay, got a motion by Marlowe, seconded by Oreg. Vote, please. Anyone wish to change, oh, sorry, Ms. Sue.
I'm fine.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Fifteen yes. That also passes commission. Zach, I think you had talked, you had, you had quite a few, didn't you? Okay, Ms. Sue. Hi, Sue Nance, County Commissioner of the Fourth District, hereby submit the following motion for consideration at the County Commission meeting on November the twenty-first, 2022. Motion to approve the V O E copyright rental agreement for Jellico High School, Jellico Elementary, and Campbell County High School. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by, go Baird. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Fifteen yes. Takes care of you, Ms. Sue.
Thank you.
All right. Six. Got you. Okay, hi, Rusty Oreg, County Commissioner of the Third District, hereby submit the following motions for consideration at the County Commission meeting on November the twenty-first, 2022. Your first motion is to suspend the rules. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So moved.
I have a second by Kitts. You're voting on suspension. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Fifteen yes. Rules have been suspended.
Mr. Chairman, as I've tried to make everybody aware of, our Veterans Affairs Officer has decided that he was going to retire. And we have a letter in front of us. I think the commission was sending an email out today of his intentions. Do you want me to read that before I make a motion?
Please.
Uh, "To whom it may concern, I'm a question of retirement from the Campbell County Veterans Affairs Department. My scheduled last day will be December thirty-first, 2022. I'm having health issues and must focus on medical appointments and treatment plans." And it's signed by Kevin Walden, and it's dated for the twelfth of October. And my motion is to accept his resignation implemented on December thirty-first, which is on a Saturday.
Dwayne Gibson, second. Okay, you're voting on Kevin Walden's acceptance, retirement letter. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Fifteen yes. And, uh.
Mr. Chairman.
Rusty, just second. And we wish nothing but the utmost best for Kevin. He has served Campbell County well.
And I was going to say that, Mr. Chairman, I spoke with Kevin this past week and, and I'm kind of like him. When I get to retirement age, I hope nobody stands in me in front of the door. But, and I wish him the best. And I told him as the heart of the commission, if he decided to change his mind to get back with us. But the reason that this was done, so we can get, I think you'd appointed me as the chairman of the Insurance and Personnel to actually start seeking applicants and I'm upset in some meetings. So if we're on that committee, we're going to be very busy in December. And I don't think we'll get enough time in to get somebody in his place. But we'll get the ball rolling. We've got some job description I handed out at the last meeting we need to review. And we'll probably do that on the first week, first Monday or Tuesday of December. And Kevin says, no, he needs his time. And so, but I have some more things, Mr. Bruce. One more thing for sure that we need to probably address, I don't think it had to come before the commission. There's a site survey that we approved in the buildings and grounds, and I put it on the agenda last week.
Go ahead.
It's a site survey that was proposed by the sheriff and the finance department. We've got problems with our cameras, our locks, and we need this survey done. It was approved unanimously through my committee. I make a motion, we go ahead and approve that site survey to be started.
Second. Motion, vote, seconded by Stanfield, and go ahead and start the site survey. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Fifteen yes.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to make a comment on Kevin Walden. He's been an asset to the county. He served the veterans well in all of Campbell County, and I commend him and congratulate him on a fine. I only wish him the best.
We're still under suspension.
No, no suspension.
We need to approve the buildings and grounds, I'm sorry, the Infrastructure Committee minutes for November the seventh, and the Insurance and Personnel Committee minutes from, I'm sorry, from November the first for the infrastructure. Do you want Zach to do that?
No, I'm gonna go ahead and read it into the record.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, Rusty Oreg, County Commissioner of the Third District, hereby submit the following motion for consideration at the County Commission meeting on November the twenty-first, 2022. Motion to approval of the minutes from the November twenty-second Infrastructure Committee and the minutes from the November seventh, 2022 Insurance and Personnel Committee. Is that your motion? You want a second, Mr. Marlowe? Okay, motion board, seconded by Marlowe. Voting on motion for that? Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Fifteen yes.
Mr. Chairman, if everybody's finished, I guess we need to reverse the suspension of the rules. I make a motion that we unsuspend the rules.
Have a motion done. Rules, seconded by Kitts. Vote, please, for unsuspension. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Fifteen yes. Rules have been unsuspended. Okay, back on the schedule. Mr. Stanfield. Hi, Scott Stanfield, County Commissioner of the Third District, hereby submit the following motion for consideration at the County Commission meeting on November the twenty-first, 2022. Motion to approve the proclamation for Bill Thompson and Landon Ford. Is that your motion? Motion, seconded by Oreg. You're voting on the proclamation. Vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Fifteen yes. Mr. Coker, we have reached the end of the meeting. Has the meeting been done correctly and?
Mr. Chairman, following this meeting, probably we'll give a few minutes to everybody to get bathroom break. I've got a buildings and grounds meeting that won't take just a few minutes. We need to clear up tonight before we leave. So the members need to stay as far as members of the buildings and grounds. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. To adjourn.